Good evening. Call this meeting in order after the pledge at least it's I'd like to have a moment of silence for Mrs. Holly Beck. I learned that she passed away over the summer or just recently, so she's part of the reason why I graduated from this school, so I would done with the pledge at least whatever moment starts. Please stand.
.................................................................................................................................... Elementary principal report.
Ah, okay. We've had a great start to our school year. We all the teachers are activating to their new classes. We welcomed our SRW that be Stevenson and our school secretary, Mrs. Williams into our building this year. We had a wonderful open house last night. Parents probably are initial last minutes of the vow. I saw sign-in sheets about eighty percent of our parents showed up for our open house last night. So it was a wonderful turnout. I know the last couple of years it seems to keep going up with the amount of parents who are engaged with our teachers and our staff here at school. That's a wonderful thing to happen. I wanted to talk about our kickstart in our lunch program. Our kickstart program has back off to a great start. The ability for our students, children to get a coffee meal every single morning has been just greatly received by everyone, including the parents and the students. There were some numbers that applied to you based on last year and this year. Last year when we were actually selling breakfast in the morning versus our kickstart and by the first week of school, we had sold approximately forty-four breakfasts. And by the end of the first week of school, about two-hundred-and-twenty-one of our students have picked up a kickstart sandwich they wanted to go there. The teachers have been excellent at making sure that they have an opportunity to have that meal whether it's when they first walk in to their classroom or if they got time within their classrooms that they provide them a time reach. So I think a lot of the parents, you can say that the teachers talked about that at our open house last night. I did want to remind everyone, if you end up watching this on video or continue on, our funding for both the McKenzie and the junior school in high school are a little bit different. They'll kind of fill us in that in the elementary school, we've got all the children receiving a kickstart formula for breakfast and lunch based on not having to now fill out three reduced lunch forms we're asking the parents because some of our funding, which is entitled funding money, we still have to provide them numbers that relate to that. So we sent out a income verification form from McKenzie and Mrs. Decker said that some of the parents at the junior school in high school that were included in a family or household need to still fill out three reduced lunch forms for high school, for the junior school in high school. So that might take a little bit of us looking at the numbers and how we increase the participation for those forms back, but that's kind of a little snap. At least we have positive thing. We're feeding all of our kids every day and now we have to make sure that we keep our funding levels up. Upcoming, we have our DOT Day, International DOT Day on Friday. A lot of kids and staff come in wearing coat caps and things. Goes along with some character education. We have trainings coming up in social studies, DLA, Fall Spirit Week is coming up, intraday is coming up. And I really want to give a big thank you to our PTA. Last year it was overwhelming with the amount of support that they provided and all of the activities that replaced all of most of our assemblies that occur other than randomly white coming into our building after last year are provided by our PTA. And so this year they're starting up again with a PTA assembly called the No Bully Zone that's occurring at one-thirty in the afternoon at the McKenzie School. And our PTA is doing an evening one called Magical Mayhem. And that's for all parents and students at six PM on October, February. So they took a couple of ideas that some people have come to work with and tried to do something I'm expecting or it shouldn't happen at all. If you have any questions, I tried to get everything out, but I kind of meant something from the start of the school year.
Is there a seat for the after-school program?
No, it's the PTA's free gap forever earlier than being invited.
Do we have a plan on how we're going to get these applications out for the three reduced lunch at the high school?
I can't answer that. I think that they were sent home. We sent ours home from the elementary students. The teachers have been bringing them back. My plan was to look through them and attempt to come up with those that didn't fill out that were three reduced lunch last year and ask them for the income verification. I spoke with a number of parents last night that said, "I'm sorry, we didn't realize we still had to fill this out." So I think that's kind of the word that's occurring with parents who've been.
I've gotten a good turnout from the elementary school already.
Just from my daughter's teachers, she didn't, I helped her explain it. She didn't really fully understand herself why everyone would fill it out. So I did help her with that so maybe a better explanation maybe for the staff doesn't understand why everyone has to fill it out. And then I just have another question. Do you two start everything with the pledge on this quarter in line with the open house today?
We have a lot. I think that was the biggest.
Caleb, what's the percentage rate for high school to get to?
For the high school, we're only at around thirty-three.
And what do we need to get to?
We need forty. Our overall, the entire school is at like thirty-seven, thirty-six point something with forty-three being in the elementary school. Obviously, that's going to end up moving to the high school at some point, but it's going to be a little while probably before the high school can get in there. Two or three years at least.
The junior high school only gave us the whole semester of the year. And we welcome to understand that. Derek Posky, who is a chemistry teacher and.
Laura Moon.
Thank you, Scott. And Lauren, who enjoys as we're studying in special education. And then the next item, you know, the senior and she spent a week with someone and she sent some presentations to me. We both realized this senior, she had the senior on and our seniors and our parents are assuming that tonight, which doesn't really scare and also are presented from Sullivan Union, our elementary district kids on the spot tonight if they so decide. And we totally presented next month's meeting. We have three students who were selected for the mid-competitive honors bands. There are two honors bands that comes from the five county area. This is the first year we've ever had students. Emily Anderson and Jacob Reed and Caleb Hall. And they're actually first on Thursday nights. And we're over there and there's some very good stuff. As you all know, unfortunately, we were not able to put a varsity football team on. However, three of our young men have joined the Sullivan West team and they have been very welcomed by the coach and players at Sullivan West. And one of our three students has, is going to start. So we are thrilled about that and the younger are very, very appreciative of being able to get that opportunity because they have a real solid passion for it. So that's what I'm about to do. Our opening day at home was about two-seventeen. We are now, we're today, we have two-twenty-one who we had, I think four in the last seven days, new parents and students to our area and they have all settled in very, very well. We are continuing our elections. They're not all going to sophomore class, which, I think they're officers, student council, seniors, and juniors that have to do that. As I said, tonight, our seniors and their parents are going to be guidelines so that they can get the information on everything that our seniors have to do this year to get their college applications, their SATs, or their ACTs. There is also at the end of the month, a meeting with the student union and all of our youth players and their parents who are choosing to do, wanting to do C track, which we didn't make. And we already have a person or company that's going to be there for us. It's the same company that did our very successful Boston trip last year for seniors. So we're really excited about that. We have a lady doctor coming at the end of the month to be sent and I will be coming too. So I had a chance to thank her for the money she was able to obtain for us to do all the new station things. And Dr. Morgano and I had a second day of school with all of seventy-two students so they could receive their own copies of our code of conduct. And so we had the opportunity to tell them how wonderful they were and how they allow their expectations on. And to also introduce them to our students, our policy, which is working very well so far, I guess you'd say. So.
Moving on to the superintendent's report.
We had the district. No, I'm sorry, district. Sorry. Okay. You're up. So start, all the tax bills have been mailed out. Things have gone a lot more smoothly this year. The only show in town was Telecent. We weren't able to find another vendor, but I've been working with them closely this year. We haven't had any of the problems that we've had last year. We had, on the first round, typically the process, they send you tax bills, you look, make sure there's no corrections, anything like that. There were a couple of dates transposed, things that were just rolled over from last year, but that was it. There were no issues with the tax rates, there were no issues with the tax installments. They updated the addresses properly and phone hasn't been ringing off the hook like with people saying that they haven't gotten anything or that these things were wrong. So that's gone much better this year. The county is not collecting. It's something I think we're going to put up on the website and let people know. I did put it on our tax insert itself that goes along with the tax bills. I think it's been pretty publicized all around that the county's not collecting, but just to let people know if they go and try to, some people will wait until the end and try to pay with their credit card with the county. That's no longer an option. Tax rates have decreased by about ten percent. People have let me know that they were happy with their tax bills going down. However, we do plan to raise them back up to eighteen, nineteen levels, not above them, but at the eighteen, nineteen level. So they've gone down ten. Plan to raise them ten next year. We do have a number of special education placements coming in that's going to cost, unknown cost at the moment. It could be fairly heavy costs. I'm not sure. There are four of them. Two that I have very little detail on at the moment and two that I have good detail on. Those two are placements that could cost in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars. No, total.
Total.
Between the two of them. I do have some offsetting income that I anticipate as well. So I don't expect that to impact operations substantially. The other two, I'm not sure of yet. I don't have enough information. We have some additional Title I money that's been floating around, about twenty thousand. That's going to help us offset some of that. There's a five-year facilities plan that's due in the next month and a half. I've contacted Savian Engineers, which is a company we've used before. So we need to get to work on that. A number of the things that were in the previous facilities plan, of course, didn't get done due to lack of funding. So I anticipate a very similar five-year facilities plan.
You want to talk about the alarm situation?
Uh, which?
That we need to rewire the system.
Uh, yes. The, we had decided to switch from Scarsdale Security to Stanley Security. So I got the company in, they started switching over the system, and then they realized that they could not switch over the elementary school system because the alarm system is too antiquated. The wires are old, the panels that the wires go into are just being retrofitted at this point to make up for the old wiring, so they can't even hook it up to their system. So at some point in the future, we're going to need to replace that system.
And we have to see if the state will permit us to do wireless.
Correct.
Which is what the cutting is.
State aid reporting, fiscal year-end audit are moving along at the next board meeting. You guys should have copies of that and I should be able to give you more details. There've been no issues brought up. We have the Smart School Bonds Act. If you recall, a while back, we got four-hundred-and-some-odd thousand. There's still seventy-one thousand dollars sitting in a pot that we need to come up with a five-year plan for that we can access. Wanted to report that the bus driver program was a huge success, offering the incentive. We covered all of our bus runs. So we no longer contract out with any company except for one, and that one is actually a cost-effective one. That is, we have our driver drive to Newburgh and we contract out the additional leg of that run. Otherwise, we would have to have that person sitting there all day and pay them to.
So the bonus is.
So the bonus has worked out wonderfully. Saved us at least thirty thousand. Next board meeting, I can give you an exact number. I'll also be starting the bus lease analysis this year. We had agreed to start looking at that in the third year. I don't suspect that it's going to be economical to buy out of the bus fleet, especially not with our current financial situation, but we will analyze that. That's all I've got to report.
You want to touch base on why the taxes went down? Because, I mean, I want to make sure everybody understands what's going to happen.
Okay.
Down because of the compressor station.
Correct. They went down because the compressor station was added to the tax rolls at eighty-seven million dollars. And the tax cap unfortunately does not take that into account until the next year. So taxes went down because eighty-seven million dollars got added to the tax rolls. Next year, there will be a very large tax cap and we intend not to raise it all the way to the top, but to raise it so that everybody's tax rate is the same as eighteen, nineteen. The rate, not the total amount taxed. The total amount taxed will increase significantly.
And it's important that if anybody in the public comes to you and if you don't know how to explain it, refer it to Caleb because if I'm wrong, correct me. If the budget goes down, we don't get to use that money.
No, we don't.
So that money's just going to sit there in limbo and it's to the tune of one-point-one million dollars. So if this budget does not go through next May, that money will just sit there in rotaries. But people have to understand what's going on. It's, it went down and we can bring it back up to twelve percent, but we're going to bring it back up to whatever it was this year excluding the two percent cap that we get every year. And that has to be conveyed and everybody has to understand what's going on. We're not raising taxes. We are bringing them back to where they were this year. But it's going to look like, oh my God, you're raising us ten percent. That's what people have to understand. And I'm going to make arrangements that Dr. Morgano and Caleb and a board member or myself will go to different areas of the town, senior citizens building, whoever we have to reach out to and explain it to them. We did it this year and we had a pretty good feedback.
And we'll hold another Saturday forum.
We'll hold another Saturday forum. Dr. Morgano, sit here for six hours looking at one another and do whatever we have to do. You know, whatever we have to do, and mine too. Whatever we have to do to make it work.
And I won't go to board.
It's very important to get this next budget through. We get the next one through, we're going. And then the other thing that could happen is the compressor station could go to the Dallas Highland and it could grieve it. It didn't this year. I have no idea why, but we are expecting that. So we are going to take some of that money and put that in a reserve fund. So if we get fined or if we have to pay back, we are going to have the money sitting there to write the check to pay back because I have no, we have no intention of borrowing money to pay somebody back. So Caleb has already set that up, planned for that. I just want to make sure everybody understands how that works. That's going to be very big in two thousand twenty, you may feel.
I also have some more good news on that. I don't know if I'd ever brought it up publicly at a board meeting. I know I've talked to Dr. Morgano about it. Because they didn't grieve it this year, any tax cert that they raise will not include this year. So if they go, that was the previous concern that I had had was that, you know, they would grieve it a year or two down the road and we owe them money that we never even.
And that's big because we didn't have the opportunity to bank any of this year's money.
Correct. That was a worry of mine, but if they don't show up to grievance day, then they can't go to court and say, hey, for that year. They can still go to the court.
For next year to get it reduced.
Absolutely, yeah. They could still go. They just can't get it for this year.
It's highly unlikely there won't be some contesting of the bounty.
I'm skeptical.
Eighty-six million and they said it was worth twenty million.
Yeah, I'm highly skeptical.
It'll settle out somewhere around fifty.
Perfect.
When was that grievance day, Christine?
Oh, that was back in April and May.
So it'll be April and May next year.
April twenty.
I thought it was in the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll look at it. Dr. Morgano, you're up.
No, prefer to JJ to begin.
So Mr. Maxon already touched on this, that we unfortunately do not have our own varsity football team. We do have a hot back, we have a number of hot back teams, but we don't have our own varsity. So with all the paperwork, all the calls, emails, support from Dr. Morgano, support from the board, we were able to get three players over to Sullivan West to still be able to play football, one senior, so we didn't get the missing senior playing football. So they're all very excited and like I said, they were welcome to open arms and everything is going great. In doing so, building for our hot back program, we want to bring that. We know they're over there, but our intentions are to hopefully bring back varsity football here next year. And next year, we're always going to try to have our own, because if we have our own work kids, they're going to participate and have who we want for our personnel, for our fans. So, you know, every year we're going to keep trying to bring that. Right now, this is just a one-year thing. In doing so, we did have a little fall savings. I gave everyone just a little document of kind of the savings, the expenses and kind of our fall savings. This is a small amount, not enough that would ever lead me not want to have our own team, but in doing so, we did save just, you know, a little bit. Anything else out of the fall? All right. Next up from speed signs, been recording those for like a year and a half. It takes a long time to get them through. Now that it's at state level, we set it off this summer to reinforce our intentions of what we wanted. And now we just kind of sit around and wait and who knows how it will happen to you. So in doing so, we decided to go ahead and check and see if the cost of buying speed signs are set instead of relying on state or guidance how long. So looked it up and the cost to have one of those signs that link the speed limit, how you know how fast you're going, is thirty-two-hundred-and-fifty, three-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per sign. So obviously, it'd be two at high school, two at the elementary school. I did speak with the guy on the phone and he said, "You only buy four of them. You buy two, you buy one, whatever you want to do, just buy." The price includes shipping, we grew brackets, and there's actually a data point on that. So I really don't.
And it's sole of power.
What?
Sole of power.
Sole of power. Sole of power. So we put it up and forget about it. Everything is controlled through your phone, so everyone has passwords. Like Morgano, we have control if he wants to shut it off for the summer or if he's gone to the summer.
Change it to two miles an hour.
Change it to two miles. And it also, if you get them, it also has a point where you can set whatever house car, whether it be forty, because it's thirty-five miles an hour there, whether it be forty or forty-five, the cars don't ride too fast, it will actually yell at the car to slow down. It will.
Good.
Yeah, it'll tell you to slow down. It will on top of flashing speed and watch the light. So right now, I sent an email through with a message for the office of all the courts over in Monticello to see if we are allowed, because it's a map, that'll write on the speed sign. See if we're allowed to do that, because we don't bring a lot of do that. More information we need in order to accomplish that. So just waiting to hear back, that we'll get more information on that. And the guy said shipping, two to three weeks. He said, "I don't worry, you'll get it within the same month, two, three weeks."
Because my concern is the kids pull out and there's a hill there and there's a danger there. The high school is my main concern.
Yeah.
The trucks can bound down that hill. It has helped having the sheriff's car out there all day. That has slowed people down, but.
I hear if we, if we just look towards that and.
And our kids walk along that road with no sidewalk, they go across the road to the Dollar General.
Yeah.
I want to do something before something happens. That is a reaction.
Every year at Junior High School, we can evaluate how they're working and where we go ahead and purchase at Junior High School. The school is going more off the road and I don't think kids will have that road back to school, so.
I think we have one. How that and what it has.
I didn't, I didn't get all the information. I just, I got basic information that I can kind of get out there since we had our.
Hey, we wanted to get an idea what the bowl cost was would be.
Yeah, we're just looking at that cost. I would, I would have to imagine there'd be a warrant to have purchased like that. I, my part is that I wouldn't, but I didn't ask that question. Just trying to get some basic zone and see where we're at.
Would you put it further about seventy-five instead of rate in the front?
I think right before our staff parking of the road and down by the Dollar General.
Well, it starts up by the cemetery now, right?
Wherever that speed sign is.
Yeah, it was a little bit too far.
So wherever the speed sign is there is where it would have to go. I guess I handled it with one of the signs, so I'll come track more and see it.
So JJ, do you know where the state is with our application?
No, I know in August, we sent a letter that was signed by Dr. Morgano, resaying our case so they can add it on file, but I don't know how many is apparently going. I've always been told it takes years, there was, and years. Years is all I've ever.
That's why I'm not, I'm not officiating to change the speed limit. That'll just add to the years.
Here.
You just want the suns. If they do really do thirty-five, it won't be a problem.
I think if I see the sign, we'll, we'll give it back enough.
Yeah, the yelling, we may.
Yelling.
Somebody may get out and attack the sun.
It could cause an accident.
But thank you for your hard work with this.
Any other questions for JJ? Nice work on the football, JJ. Nice work. Glad our kids got a chance to play ball.
One of the things that Caleb, you didn't mention about, are we the lowest tax rate in the county?
Oh, that's correct. We are the lowest tax rate in the county now.
Yeah. There was an article in the paper about declining enrollment. It's a phenomenon in New York State, certainly in Sullivan County, and my reaction when the paper called me was that this has more to do with employment than it has to do with anything else. The jogs are simply not here. The casino is not the Panacea people thought it would be. It's thirty years late. The, we lost about twenty-five kids, I think, from last year to this year, and it's not that far off from our demographics though. Gene mentioned that we met with the kids. Gene mentioned that we met with the kids and we met with two grade levels at a time. My message to the kids is always the same, to take care of each other. Tell them this is not a big school district, it's not General Motors. You need to take care of each other. When I asked them how many of you started here in kindergarten, a good number of them raised their hand. That's great demographics, you have consistency among the kids and they do take care of each other. And our SROs have said, you know, I was standing with the SRO at the high school and he said, you know, they pull out of the parking lot and they don't like peel out. He said, why don't they do that? I said, because we'd be disappointed. Kids are different here and for the better. They have a good upbringing. We had Brandon Lee White here, available, two parents and staff in the evening on opening day. It was a small turnout, I think because it was right before Labor Day and people were away or traveling. If we have a motivational speaker again, I think we should have it after school begins. Starting next month, there'll be a student rep sitting at the table. We'll have to have a little longer table from the student council. I think having them up here, having them report from here is, it's what I was used to in my prior school district and I think it's appropriate to have a student rep sit up here. We talked about the alarm system, declining enrollment. I have goals for the board, not for them, for us, to improve academic outcomes in both buildings, improve the financial condition of the school district, improve building and grounds, transportation and food service. After the board reviews it, I will share this with the public. We began our principal search last evening with identifying characteristics and qualities of a high school principal. From that, we developed questions. We have two, we have two students who sat in last night. Next week, we'll have several more. We have members of the community and of the staff. And it's going to be a very important hire because that position is critical to the school district. And we're not going to hire anyone unless we find the best person for that position. Any questions from the board?
It was a great open. I was glad to hear that the school went off with big success in both schools. I don't really have any more. So moving on to public comment on the consent agenda items.
Can you please tell me what happened to the flashing speed light down on the circle mark?
I cannot.
Cause we had one.
There was?
It was.
Oh, that was, that was just to get a count.
Yeah, that's to get a count. Those were, those are not permanent. Those are just so they can...
Those aren't permanent. And interestingly, the more people speed, the better. We should've told people to drive fast because it would've shown a need. But I think at the high school, probably showed a need. There's no way people do thirty miles an hour, we had a whole length of that sign. But that, that's just to get a reading.
Oh, okay.
Now, we found in our research, we can buy those, as JJ mentioned, but I'd rather have the town and the county buy them. But those are just temporary.
Thank you.
But there's nothing, if we put the signs up and the students come out and give tickets, people will slow down. They would hear that some are giving out tickets. And we went over and thanked them for doing that.
Okay. Minutes of orange. Has everybody had a chance to look over all the agendas? All good?
I have a question. For the people who are in the position of this decision. Is that a new position?
Yes.
Yes.
And we just didn't plan for that part?
Did not.
What was the reason that we stopped, you see, you...
That would be a better question for the principal and the superintendent, but I believe it was a coverage issue that we couldn't cover all of our classes and the ALC room.
And where did your money come from, Chris?
I'm just hoping to use that twenty thousand dollars in Title I and II money that I had there, but ongoing funds, we're gonna have to look at it.
Anything else? So you motion to approve four point oh one through seven point oh five?
The, let me reiterate on that, just so you guys understand. That is a new position, but it's not a one hundred percent new position in cost. The person who's taking that position was getting paid from numerous sources before. The total additional cost is eighteen thousand. I realized I didn't make that clear. It's not one hundred percent of that cost is being borne.
A motion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to congratulate Lisa Marie on your...
Old business. Anybody have any old business? All good? Second public comment on anything you'd like to public pertaining to school.
Did you guys have a walk-on motion that should be new business?
Oh, yeah, hold on. Sorry. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Back to, hold that thought. Back to new business. We have a walk-on motion. Approval upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the per day pay for the previous approved permanent substitute be one hundred ninety-five dollars per day. Approval upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that Nick Weiss be appointed as the permanent substitute for the high school, junior high school, which is over now.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eyes carried. Just one more.
I'd just like to say that the first conference day, first day of school for the teachers was amazing with Mr. White there. It was the best start to a school year that I remember ever. It was inspiring. I wish we had, it was a busy day and I wish we had time to talk about it amongst ourselves, but truly, he was an inspiring gentleman.
He did a great job. He complimented Scott's presentation and then said, after Scott got everybody all up, I came on. I said, I think you said I was boring. He said, no, you calm people, so. I figured. But having an inspirational speaker on the first day is nice. We have to find a way of having that person available to the parents and students in the evening at a time when they can come. Cause I think a lot more people would've come if it was after Labor Day. But thank you.
Any other public comment? I'll make the motion to enter into executive session for a personnel matter and second it, and there will be no business afterwards. Let's... Okay, shall we now pick up? Yeah, let's break this one, quick, below. Yep.
All right.
Oh, yeah. Just...
Oh, yeah. Breaking down.
Just, it's...